Okay, I'd like to call the board of education.
Uh huh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda, is there a pre-voting agenda?
I moved to a pre-voting agenda. I think February 26th, 2015, we have presented.
We have a motion in the second. I'll answer by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the approval of the consent agenda items.
Who do you do the consenting as a item just to be made?
Okay, the motion in the second. I'll answer by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And next we have public participation. Okay, we'll move on to the report of the superintendent.
Leading everyone. Few things that I want to highlight. There's no going into their, the annual school board elections April 7th. As has been stated before, we're not having an election for directors because we wanted to get filed for the position. But we do have a no tax increase bond issue that will be on the ballot April 7th. We'll provide some more detailed information about that at the March meeting. But I just want to mention that yes, that is on the ballot. So there is an election. Enrollment last Wednesday in January. We have two count dates during the year that are required by the Department of Education and Secondary Education where we report our enrollment as of that day. And those dates are the last Wednesday in September and the last Wednesday in January. So you have information in your packet that shows what our accounts were on those two count dates. In the last Wednesday in September, we had enrollment of 1,860 students. And on the count date on the last Wednesday in January, we had 1,844 students. In comparison to last year, our last year of January count was 1,800. So we are up 44 students as of the last Wednesday. So I wanted to provide that information. Kindergarten registration is coming up at both Singleton Elementary and Bloomsdale Elementary. Parents can call and make those appointments, beginning March 2nd, which is this coming Monday. The DLP crew at the high school has made a couple of promotional videos that we'd like to show you right now. Both to provide information about the kindergarten registrations and also to kind of show off some of the things that our high school students are doing that are part of the organization.
And this one we need to go for a second. They work at the same elementary because it's here close to town. So this is our first video in the night. No? There we go.
Hi, during kindergarten screening, the students will come to school on Saturday, March 1st, and they're going to be doing a series of different test. Mine include gross motor skills. They must have five motor skills such as cutting, writing their name, counting analogics. And they'll also have to identify colors and shapes of all the sundogs. Hi, I'm Marsha Nelson. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Bloomsdale Elementary. And I'd like to tell you a little about kindergarten registration. The kindergarten screening at Bloomsdale will be on Saturday, March 28th. The children will come and do various activities. The screening, they do tests just gross motor skills, five motor skills. The five motor skill that maybe cutting is writing their name.
Who goes on the website?
They were sent to Channel 7. And I'm not sure if he's running them yet, but I need to check and see if they're on our website. But I'm not sure.
If not, it...
They will be. And we can also send them out to the Herald and make sure that they have enough sundogs.
I think those were the first two kind of video productions maybe that the DLP crew...
Yeah, minus the stuff that they've been working on politically for the video board. That was the first run that back group just had. So I was really impressed with the first run.
So those were completely developed by high school students that are just making that program. Just providing some information, a little bit of bond and everything. I think at this point, turn it over to the principals for principal reports. I'm not sure if you want to go first.
You're next, Sean. You're welcome.
Oh, I'll go first. Okay, thank you. Good evening. Just some of the rundown of a few of the exciting things we've done in the elementary. We had the CMO Explorer in today. It's that big multi-colored bus. And it was in for 4th and 5th grade, and they had it set up for U.S. history. And they had some amazing artifacts. They borrowed from other museums to set that up. And I think the kids had a great time. 5th grade did a scavenger hunt with it. A lot of facts and things they had to find. And the gentleman that drives it and sets it up and runs it, Gary Tyler, did an excellent job. So 4th and 5th grade had a great day today. Our Me and My Guy dance, the big favorite dance of the year, has had to be rescheduled. And it's going to be March 27th. So get your flowers, order dads, and your matching shirts and ties so you'll be ready to go. We had a potluck for staff, which we have a ton of great cooks in the building. Plus, we had a chocolate fountain. So that was our Valentine's potluck for the month. That was a great time. Our PTA held a Subway Night as a fundraiser. We celebrated the 100th Day of School with just a myriad of different things. And we recently had a fundraiser, and they were, I hope you've seen them, they're the little cards. And they've got a click across the bottom, and they have discounts at restaurants and some local areas. We sold, in our elementary, which has over 500 kids, we sold 1,407 of those cards. So they did a great job. And our elementary brought in $7,000 for us to use for field trips and buses and such as into our account. So really proud of the community for supporting that and really proud of the kids for doing such a great job.
And that was the cards, the gold cards?
That was the gold cards. They've got some great, they really have, they have some very good discounts. And we have some extras in the office if anybody missed the boat and wants to get on.
So you still ask for any presents?
Oh, we do, yes. Come by and we'll...
Oh, I got two of mine.
Oh. A lot of us did buy multiple cards, that's right.
When the two siblings come to your front door selling the same thing, I can't see, he's buying one. Then we look and see what they are.
It was a good deal. Thank you.
At Bloomsdale Elementary, the teacher of the month was Dana Bowen, and staff of the month was Jane Princeley. We had a first grader nominated for Do Right Thing Award with KOS 12. They watched a video on encouragement and you can do it. And he just started doing that to all his classmates and teachers. The teacher noticed it was the one that was discouraged and couldn't write something. He went over to him and said, "No, you can do it." So she nominated them for that. We had an AR reward day for kindergarten through 5th grade. They did different things like building juice ice cream for the students that met their goal. We did, we came into the Performing Arts Center for a band recruitment night with Miss Elders for middle school with the 5th grade students. We had MRI training and RTI meetings. We celebrated 100th Day of School. Kindergarten 1st grade did a lot of fun activities with 100 Day Stations and 100 cup towers and all kinds of 100 activities. Then we collected items for the Superior Action Agency, and I was pretty proud of our building. We collected like 94 at kindergarten, and we only have 50 students. So we collected 94 items at kindergarten, 92 at 1st grade, 30 at 2nd grade, 45 at 3rd grade, 41 at 4th grade, and 34 at 5th grade. And some of the items were more expensive at 5th grade though, so we did an awesome job. It was kind of short notice to, they paid for them, so they presented those items in. And then we had birthday celebrations and Hall of Fame papers, and we had students sign the wall. We have an AR wall of bank for 100, 200, 300. We have Me and My Guy Dance coming up, and Me and My Gal Dodgeball coming up on March 7th. And so we would like you to come celebrate with us. We have, next week is Read Across America, and I know a lot of you like to come and read to the students, so we invite you to come read. If you want to come read, just call the office and we'll set you up a class, okay?
Good evening. It's been busy. January 23rd, we held a spelling bee. Bryce Trolinger took alternate, Asa Lemons got 3rd place, Michael Rook got 2nd place, and Brooke Wyler got 1st place. Ms. Wyler, Mr. Rook, and Mr. Lemons will compete in the Mineral Area Junior High School Athletic Conference Spelling Bee at North County Senior High School, which was supposed to be this Tuesday. It got postponed until the end of the ACT year. So that's upcoming for next time. Mrs. Meyer and members of St. Genevieve Middle School SAD held a movie night on Friday, January 23rd, showing Molipso to about 100 kids. Mr. D and Mrs. Jokers and members of St. Genevieve Middle School Student Council successfully held our annual Valentine's Dance on Friday, February 6th for approximately 200 students. Ms. Cherry and the Publications Kids four made a picture taken for the Valentine's Dance. The Hues Couple was voted on and awarded to Brooke Wyler and Tyler Jenkins. And they had a whole choreographed dance at the end. It was very nice. Mrs. Elder successfully held an instrument night for 5th grade students coming from Bloomsdale and coming from St. Genevieve Elementary, and she is so excited about the opening group. Evidently, our feeder elementary schools are going to be a fantastic job with the music program. And she has already been in my office about three times asking for more instruments in anticipation of needing more instruments for those students. So that's fantastic. St. Genevieve Middle School Annual History Fair was held in the old middle school gym on Tuesday, February 10th through Friday, February 13th. We had a different standard this year. In the past, we've just kind of done it according to what our social studies teachers thought was good. We coordinated this year with Social Studies Department Day with National History Day criteria, which is much more stringent, and had a gentleman come in who's familiar with grading those projects. And he came in and helped grade those to send them on to the next level. And before, we didn't have a next level to send them on to. So at the high school level, there's some opportunity for scholarships and such with this History Day program. So hopefully, we're going to build it here and then we'll move on to the high school and the complete. Congratulations to the winners. Blue ribbon winners were Ralph Baer, Grandfather of Video Games by Robert Muffler and Curtis Richardson, Anne Frank, The Life of Hiding by Brooke Wyler and Jennifer Humboldt, Audie Murphy, World War II Legend by Jared Leclerc and Sam Fisher, Harriet Tubman, Moses of the South by Sierra Jacob and Rebecca Gongs, Walt Disney by Grace Tommier and Kylie Deck, Warren Buffett by Sam Stoltzer, I Have a Green by Martin Luther King by Macy Mancheck, Daughter of the Sky by Amelia Earhart by Madeline Huffstetter, Steve Jobs by Zach Macklin, Amelia Earhart, Courage in the Sky by Heidi Lipp. And the People's Choice Awards were Walt Disney by Grace Tommier and Kylie Deck, Gustav Eiffel by Kim Oden and Mackenzie Hepner, and JFK by Sarah Moore and Abigail Braun. And those are the kids, the blue ribbon winners, that are going to move on to the next level. Update their projects in the areas where they were weak and then move on to the, I think it's regional. NGHS February Star of the Month was Maddie Huffstetter. Maddie is the daughter of Paul and Heather Huffstetter. This is Maddie's first year in NGHS, and she currently has the most service points of any 8th grade student for the organization. She works hard and is a young lady with great integrity. Ms. Sharon Fowler and Mrs. Amy Rowland and JHS advisors come in and thank Maddie for her service to the organization and her positive character over the past year. Congratulations to Maddie. We wrapped up basketball at the middle school. Girl seasons left a lot of room for, for me, and the boys' seasons also did. But the 7th grade ended up 4th in conference and the 8th grade ended up 3rd. Our St. Genevieve Middle School featured teacher or staff member for February was Mrs. Diane Miller. Diane does so many things for not only our building, but for the whole district. She is the reason we have decorations in the teacher's lounge for birthdays. On any other occasion when we need cheering up, Diane makes us all look good. She is always working behind the scenes and does not get or take credit for all her hard work. If anyone deserves to be recognized as Diane. She is always looking for students to nominate for doing the right thing. So I nominate Diane for doing everything right. Diane puts her all in everything she does every day. So congratulations to Diane. Thank you.
We also had a pretty busy month. Part of it is you guys probably need to thank your bosses coming from the chairs because they'll be here a little bit. I want to start with some staff recognition. Tina Howe became a national board certified counselor this past month. And if you know Tina, she's just one of those people that she just works so hard and quietly and just keeps pounding out success after success. And is currently actually working on her dissertation or her doctorate that's done as well. Danny Engelmann was named a distinguished finalist for the SLU 1818 M. Kathleen Casey Award of Teaching Excellence. And to me, again, that's huge because that looks at everybody that teaches in the 1818 program. And there were 10 that were selected as distinguished finalists, which was number two on that list. And I'm not going to say there was anything fishy going on, but the winner of the award did go to SLU high school teacher. I'm sure it was all legit. Brian Jet was named a National Federation of State High School Associations 2014 Midwest Sectional Coach of the Year for Girls Cross Country. This award goes to one coach in the Midwest region, which includes Kansas, Minnesota, Missouri, Nebraska, North Dakota, and South Dakota. So to me, these are all just insanely impressive awards. And just to say this, I told you last month that Dr. Boyd was pretty well done and there. And now I can stand before you and say it's efficient. He is indeed Dr. Boyd, and I know that because the nameplate above his door now says it. The SGHS wrestlers had a pretty good run. They finished 3rd place in the CMO conference tournament. The individuals there were Nathan Geisner, 2nd place, Wes Dickens, 1st place, Wade Dickens, 2nd place, Tanner Jones, 1st place, Austin Brewer, 1st place, and Ethan Bates, 1st place. Then they went on to the state championships, and I'm proud to say finished 3rd. And first time in, I believe, 13 years we've brought home a trophy in wrestling. And it just couldn't happen to a better group of guys, all led by Coach Bonnell. The individuals in this was AJ Gongs with the 6th, Wade Dickens and Wyatt Hawn finished 5th, Tanner Jones and Wes Dickens finished 3rd, Tyler Jones finished 2nd, and Ethan Bates won the championship in the heavyweight division. And the thing I want to say about Ethan that I think is so cool about his championship is last year he qualified for state, got out there, and was told for medical reasons he could not wrestle. So the one thing that he really focused on was, "I'm a junior. I can rebound from this. I can come back and I can have a strong finish to my senior year." And there isn't much of a stronger finish than a win in your last match. So I'm very impressed with that whole team, but also with Ethan and what he did. Three members of the St. Genevieve High School chapter of the FCCLA were elected to regional state levelship leadership positions. Bailey Smith was elected as Region 6 parliamentarian. Vivian Vaughn was elected as Region 6 Vice President. And Alex Newman was elected to represent the region as the State Vice President for Region 6. Newman will also serve as Member of Missouri State FCCLA Executive Council. Congratulations to all who represented SGHS in star events. Earning a silver rating were Deandra Boland, Erica Matthews, Emily Nicholson, and Sophia Rensilio. Earning a gold rating and advancing to state competition in March were Jenna Papen, Caitlin App, Sally Greasehaven, Caitlin Bloom, Phoebe Patel, Bailey Smith, Selena Kreidler, Kelsey Schmidt, Kirsten Trump, Alex Newman, Daniel Ditch, and Bethany Beckett. And earning a perfect score and also advancing was Natalie Engel. Which, this is a great problem as an administrator to have, but you heard all those people, you heard they're going to state. It's quite a hit in the budget, but it's one I'm quite happy to be making. Also attending star events were assistants completing online were Tess Bowman, Nicole Bowman, Morgan Papen, Allison Bova, Abby Stolzer, Vivian Vaughn, Addie Steigl, and Brooke Hasty. Congrats to the following volleyball players for making the 2014 Academic All-State Team. This one I think is neat because they have to achieve cumulative grade point average of 3.6 or higher, including the first semester. You think about it, there's six players on the main volleyball, plus a few alternatives. So think about the number I'm going to read here. Madison Reynolds, Jessica Probst, Caitlin Sokowski, Kendall Sokowski, Riley Meyer, Emma Bosler, Tess Bowman, Natalie Engel, Cameron Geddinger, and Mariah Redd. And that's just to me follow. That's pretty much what your whole varsity team right there. Together with the other buildings, we donated 588 items for the Missouri Action Agency. Our groups were canned vegetables, we gave 168. Crackers, we gave 111. My personal favorite, hot dogs, we gave 100 packages. I wouldn't believe the number of calls we took. Are you guys really collecting hot dogs? Yeah, we are. And two brushes, 209. Vivian Vaughn and Addie Steigl had the pleasure of appearing on Channel Fox 2 News with Kim Hudson. If you guys saw that, that was really neat. They got Kim to wear the green hat, which, yeah, I absolutely loved that. Vivian and Addie are both members of FCCLA, and they just, they basically did amazing work and have done amazing work with cooperation of the community and support of the No Kid Hungry Project. Three students from St. Genevieve High School helped educate preschool students about the importance of proper hand-washing when fighting disease. This was a component of a star event for FCCLA. And those three students were Jenna Papen, Caitlin App, and Sally Greasehaven, who went to Leepah Head Preschool and taught those students. FBLA District Leadership Conference at Mineral Area College. 3rd place was Caitlin Kreidler and Dylan Burr. 2nd place was earned by Tess Bowman, Austin Caldwell, Daniel Ditch, and Jessica Probst, Olivia Schneer, Vivian Vaughn, and Taylor Hasty. And 1st place was earned by Dylan Burr, Daniel Ditch, Brooke Hasty won two of them, and Taylor Hasty, Selena Kreidler, Tate Meyer, Olivia Schneer, Josie Toomes, Jessica Probst, Nicole Bowman, and Morgan Papen. And the majority of those will all compete in the state contest as well. So we're in a lot, I know. It's really exciting right now, and I think that's the most she's had. And to be honest with you, Miss Bader, I don't really know how to react to that. How am I going to accommodate getting all these people there? In addition to all of that, two members of the chapter were elected to hold officer positions for District 12. Their Brooke Hasty will serve as Vice President of FBLA membership, and Josie Toomes will serve as District 12 Secretary for the upcoming school year. Three of our high school girls were nominated for and received the Do the Right Thing Award. Josie Toomes was nominated by Officer Clark, and Addie Steigl and Vivian Vaughn for all their work in the No Kid Hungry Program won the award and was nominated by Dr. Etherington. And they went just this past Wednesday and received those awards. So that's the second straight time now that that award's been given out that we've had recipients of it. So to me, that was really neat. All in all, I believe we had four there that day. And just in today, because if all of this wasn't enough, our kids participated in the Perryville Area Career and Technical Center. Some of the results came back from their district competition. We had 3rd places in Austin Wilson with Electronics, Technology, and Information, and Dustin Geatley with Preschool Teaching Information. We had 2nd places by Josh Beerman in Electronics, Technology, and Information. So two of the top three were taken by us in that category. Blake Meyer in Welding Technology Performance. And 1st place was by Ashley Brown in Preschool Teaching Information. So again, in that category, two of our kids took the top 3 spots. So that's pretty much so what's been going on with us. Thank you.
Good job, guys. That's so exciting. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, we'll move on to safety reports.
Safety reports are included with the...
Okay, okay. We'll move on to unfinished business.
School calendar, yes. You know, last month, we were given an initial draft of a calendar for consideration. Basically, the process has always been that that initial draft that you get is, in essence, taking this year's calendar and just rolling it over to a new calendar year and making it fit within the dates that were there. As I discussed last month, we really wanted to take a look at a variety of issues that have been raised in the past concerning the school calendar. And I kind of went over some of those. Come up through previous comments on the calendar, previous discussions by the Board of Education. And so I threw kind of in my initial email out to the faculty when I was looking for comments on the calendar. Kind of listed those, so I wanted to be sure that we got some comments on those particular issues. And then anything else that they may want to, that they may have wanted to bring up. The issues that we wanted to take a look at was numbering the makeup days, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, protecting Easter break somehow, protecting a professional development day in the calendar. We have more and more required professional development for our teachers, and we typically had our professional development days used as makeup days, which has really caused some issues for us. And at this point, we have so much of the items, or so many of the items that are required that we really need to protect at least one of the professional development days. Some issues with elementary open houses, and in particular kindergarten open house, that they didn't have sufficient time to work in the classrooms prior to that Tuesday night kindergarten open house. So that was an issue that we wanted to look at. And then the possibility of setting graduation date with calendars. So those were the six items that were kind of thrown out for comment. And then, as I mentioned before, we wanted to take any additional comments that we might have. You have the comments there as a part of your packet. Kind of the things that we wanted to look at, you know, it was a goal of mine that the process be a very open process. Committee feel like they could, you know, provide input and try to work through these issues. And I feel like we were able to accomplish that. I know the committee worked really hard on this because it's one of those things that it's not a real easy thing to do, to try to meet the state requirements for a calendar and then try to address some of these issues as well. So I really appreciate the work that the committee put into it. The other piece of that, that we wanted to make sure that we were protecting the educational integrity of the calendar. That it wasn't just a calendar of convenience, but it was a calendar that made sense from an educational viewpoint. So that was the task that faced the committee. We met for, I believe it was over two hours. Does that sound right, Mr. Mayor? So it took a while to kind of work through the issues. Some of the highlights of the calendar that you have before you now, which this calendar that is being proposed is significantly different from the one that you saw last month. Because we really went through from top to bottom and tried to consider all the issues. We were aided, if you will, by the fact that Memorial Day goes a week later in the calendar for next year. That really helped us address some of the issues as we went through. But I'll hit some of the high points. One of the things that we did... One of the things that we did at the beginning to address the kindergarten and one through five open houses, is that we will begin with the district in-service on Monday, the tenth, as we have normally done, but then on the eleventh will be an all-teachers workday. So that'll be an opportunity for teachers who work in the classrooms, prepare their classrooms for the open house for kindergarten and one through five. And then follow that with the building level, teacher in-service, then will be on the Wednesday. So we basically just flip-flopped those two things, and that seemed to take care of that issue. The Thursday of that week is an off day, and the classes would begin on Friday, August fourteenth. The open houses at the middle school and the high school are listed there as well. We put in a teacher in-service day on Friday, September four. So that is the day when students will be off, teachers will be here doing in-service activities. So that will provide a four-day weekend for students. And it's early in the calendar year, so we can do some of those required things. We're not worried about weather, kind of issues, and those kinds of things, so we can get that taken care of fairly early in the calendar. You can see the items that are there for September, October, those are pretty standard items. Parent-teacher conferences are as they have been in the past. And then we get into November. The next item that we looked at was the possibility of the Wednesday before the Thanksgiving holiday either being an off day or being an early dismissal day. We were not able to make it work in the calendar for it to be an off day. Felt like that maybe the first step we should take would be to try an early dismissal day on that Wednesday. I think the Calendar Committee was very much in favor of doing that. One thing that we will definitely do is see how our attendance is on that day. This district doesn't do many half-days, if you will. So we will keep an eye on that, but this calendar does include an early dismissal day, dismissal season one o'clock on that Wednesday before Thanksgiving. It'll allow time for faculty staff and students and their parents to have a little more time for travel, for family get-togethers on, on the holiday. Christmas holiday would begin December eighteenth, and that would be a full two-week break for the Christmas holiday. Another of the considerations, which is probably more important to the high school than it is to elementary and middle schools, is balancing out the semesters, which have approximately the same number of days in the fall semester and the spring semester. So that was another consideration. And did a pretty good job of doing that with this calendar. We have eighty-five days in the fall semester and eighty-nine days in the spring semester. So we were able to accomplish that as well. January eighteenth will be an off day with no classes. That is Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. February fifteenth, President's Day holiday. And then we were able to do another in-service on March eleventh. So there will be no classes on March eleventh. So this will give us two in-services, which will allow us the time that we need to do our professional development, both required and just some of the items that we need to do throughout the year in terms of professional development. Easter holiday would begin on March twenty-third at three o'clock. This is a three-day Easter holiday, with Thursday, Friday, and Monday being off. The nice thing, though, is that it's guaranteed locked in that those days are off, so we wouldn't have travel plans, those kinds of things. Would resume then on the twenty-ninth. Last day of classes would be on May thirteenth. You will note that all makeup days are on the end of the calendar year, so all ten makeup days that we need to have in there, in the event that we miss, maximum number of weather days, are in there, they're all on the end of the calendar, so they'll be taken in the order, if we have three days, then we'll add three days. If we have five days, we'll add five days. And the nice thing is, is that this would complete, even if we maxed out on our makeup days, the calendar would be completed prior to Memorial Day. So, again, I want to commend the committee for, for all the work that they did in putting this together. One item that I mentioned previously that is not noted on the calendar, and what I would ask for, for you to do is to delay making a decision until next month. We'll talk about 2015 graduation dates. At that point, let's talk about 2016 graduation date and whether that should be added to the calendar. I've asked Mr. Haney to, we, we kind of wallered it around for a while, for lack of a better phrase, with the Calendar Committee, but many people on the Calendar Committee really didn't have an opinion about graduation date being on the calendar. So the high school folks did, but middle school and elementary members of the committee really didn't have an opinion on that. So what I asked Mr. Haney to do was to get some input from the faculty staff, get some information meetings, where he gathered some input. And so I'd like to postpone any discussion on graduation date until next month, and kind of, kind of do both at the same time. You know, I feel like the, the committee did an excellent job of putting together a calendar for your consideration, and at this point, I would take any questions.
I just want to say, this, this, this one is, I know many, many people, that they're, they're just excited that, well, the committee did a great job, no doubt, but they're excited that you're really are involved and are listening. And just by the comments we got, you know, the board pack was amazing. So it's not, it's not, we're not calling or growling or this and that about it, it's all working out, and, and the fact that you guys are listening.
Well, and with respect to this calendar, thank you for, for that comment, but with respect to this calendar, we were, we were lucky in some respects that, that the Memorial Day went a week later. That, that really helped us to address the concerns that had been expressed before, and like I said, still maintain the, the educational integrity and all those considerations. We'll see what happens when it falls back earlier and we have to make some adjustments, but at this point, I'm, I'm pretty happy with the work of the committee and what came out of the committee for a proposed calendar.
Just making sure that the teachers got their professional days is, is, that's set a big part, and, and then for Easter, they're still going to get two or three days off, so, you know, we're excited about that. So, I just want to.
Can I just ask a point? You went through a very, a very thorough presentation on that, but there were comments, and it's kind of hard to flip back and forth on the screen, several comments by teachers asking for some kind of a game plan change on the day before Thanksgiving, and we're giving them, shall we say, a half-day dismissal one. I think, I think that's great. And did I hear you say that the Easter break would be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, return to school on March twenty-ninth?
That is correct.
And did you say that that would not be tampered with?
Correct.
Okay. Then the makeup days, they look like to me that there are none, well, there's probably a few you could take, but none really are glaring, that stick out, there's no like makeup day listed here within the calendar, starting from September to May. They're all, shall we say, would be tacked on at the end.
Correct.
And that starts chronologically with the sixteenth going to the twentieth in the first week, and the twenty-third to the twenty-seventh in the, the second week, which is a total of ten days. And I think rather, I think people would rather, you know, if you're at home and you're seeing how this, the winter develops, you can just say, well, there goes the sixteen, there goes the seventeen, now we're up to the eighteen. I think it's a lot easier for them than to have to, you know, try to figure out what's going to happen by the Board of Education and the administration at the meetings and how it will affect the end. And did I hear you correctly that in the month of March, we'll discuss the graduation date for the year 2015 and sixteen?
Yes.
So, so what I'm seeing here is there has been a lot of, as Mrs. Resener said, a lot of listening, a lot of meetings, and I think although this looks just like the old-time calendar, there's been a lot of changes here, a lot of positive changes. You know, it's not the same, you know, like it was in 2002, which is the same as 2003, four, and five. No, there's been some, I'd say, heavy duty tweaking here. And it's also refreshing to see the comments that the teachers had, or the requests, or their opinions listed in this, this board pack that haven't been done in the past year. So I have to stand right there with Mrs. Resener and say, Bravo to the committee and to the district office for focus from here.
All I like about it is it runs itself. You don't have to do anything. It runs itself.
One of the nice things in, in my previous district, we had a locked-in calendar, where the makeup days were all on the end. And one of the things that we noticed with that is that it helped our attendance a little bit, because parents could plan, plan for things, and they knew when the off-days were going to be, so we have parents that would, would make, you know, their orthodontist appointments and, and doctor appointments and family trips and that sort of thing, because they knew that those days would suddenly be used as a makeup day and they have to scramble around and that sort of thing. So we saw that as a real benefit. I, I think that we're fortunate to be able to make that work within the timeframe and still be out prior to the Memorial, Memorial Day holiday.
There's, there's another thing that I think some people in the committee, and maybe even within the school, have probably not really thoroughly understood for years, and that is, you mentioned you just roll over one year to the next, then, you know, in setting up the next year for 2016, then you gave it to the committee, okay? Then the committee took into consideration the requests and ideas of the faculty, wrote them down, then you spent a lot of time developing this calendar, then you bring it to this meeting, and the Board of Education will vote on it. Is that true? So this is not the Board, people think, well, the board did that. This is not the Board of Education's calendar. The board will either not approve it or approve it. It was developed by a committee. So people who don't understand it, it needs to be brought to their attention, because this is not, this is not the Board of Education.
And this proposed calendar is, is the calendar that is recommended by the committee? It would be a back for fifteen, sixteen, fourteen? Also wanted to say thanks. I know last year we had some discussion, and mostly everything that I think we discussed that night has been addressed. So I really appreciate the board committee and the administration, so thank you.
Can I ask you?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I think we just want to talk about graduation, that's one, but you're going to gather some information about that with, with faculty and...
I don't, Mr. Haney, can you kind of?
What I did, and Snow kind of got us on this one, was I scheduled a couple after-school sessions, we're supposed to have a before-school session. Anytime I do the voluntary sessions for staff, I always like to put some before and after, so the coaches have the opportunity to attend. To be honest with you, they're likely attended. I, I don't think, in what I've been talking to the staff, that it's a real hot topic for them. So what I've now embarked on is, and I did a few more today, is trying to get around to staff and pull them together in groups two or three, and just get their feedback, so that I'm seeking that out and making sure that in kind of these intimate conversation settings, they're able to speak candidly and say, well, this is what I wouldn't like, this is what I wouldn't like, this is what I do fear. And we're, we're looking at all factors. We're looking at the factors of what happens if we set a date and we get out well before it, and there's a lag. What happens if we set a date and then we go well beyond it because of snow and those makeups? And so we're kind of considering all those scenarios and what they're going to do educationally to those seniors, what they're going to do to our college credit programs, and that, you know, that your seniors are heavy in, kind of the impact it's going to have on all those things. We're just trying to have, we're really just trying to ultra-exhaust the conversation to make sure that we've had these inputs and we've looked at these things. I want to thank Dr. Lindsay for that, because when the snow hit, he was the first one to kind of say, hey, I'm okay with shelving this in order to allow you to continue to have those conversations, make sure you've addressed it with all staff who wants to say.
Maybe you talk with the senior parents or the guys, or the ones, you know, essentially what they want for a day.
Yeah, exactly.
Am I going there with talking to them?
We could do that, if, if you guys would like me to. What, to be honest with you, without saying too much, I'm kind of getting the same consensus from everyone I've talked to, and that is basically, you know, if you're letting us know a year out, that's wonderful. That's amazing. It gives us time to make those plans. And that's basically what the consensus of what I'm hearing so far is, is that we can adjust, especially when we know that far out, that we can get it done. And in this case, for next year, it would actually be about fourteen months out, and every year would be about fifteen months out if we continue that trend after for this year, which I would hope we would do.
It's like anything else, there's pros and cons. So we're just trying to go, as, as he said, through an exhaustive process, to where it's not one of those things where, where we present something and a decision is made, and then we go, oh, well, he was really thought of that. Because it's a, you know, if we were to, to recommend that you set the graduation date when you adopt the calendar, we want to make sure that, that that's a good recommendation and that it's been well thought out, and, you know, that, that it makes sense, you know, with respect to, to how it fits academically and educationally, in particular for those seniors. And, you know, of course, we're, we consider, you know, people have to make travel plans and, and, you know, high school graduations, and people come from great distances, so they have airline tickets and, you know, so all those things are kind of being taken into consideration as we go through the process. You know, there is some downside to it, and as he mentioned, you know, once you set the date, you set the date. And if, you know, we have a beautiful balmy, warm winter, and we don't miss any days, then potentially you could be out of school, you know, for a week before your graduation. Or if you miss a bunch of days, then your graduation is a week before you get out of school. So, you know, assuming that you kind of try to split the difference. So we're, we're kind of, you know, Mr. Haney's done a great job of facilitating that whole discussion and trying to come up with something that, that will, you know, that makes sense, and he continues to get, to get input. Kind of once he's gone, excuse me, once he's kind of gone through that process, then he and I will sit down together and, and kind of talk through it as well, and I would think that we would be ready then to have, have a discussion about it at next month's meeting to really kind of nail this down.
Tell you something funny, I, the Board of Education in Jackson, they do set a week, and I was just talking to the board president about it, and she told me, well, our hair would be on platters if we didn't set it a year ahead of time. And, and we got to talking about it, but then something came up, she didn't finish it, but I'll see her next meeting, so I'll try and, kind of, and she said, you mean you don't set it a year ahead? I said, no, that's what I'm going to talk to you about. All right, thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept this calendar.
Second.
Okay, no, and the second, I think I see an I. Oppose? Motion. Next is the consideration of property transfer. Dr. Manger?
Yes, you have in front of you, we didn't get it in the, in your packet, I don't believe, but you have a copy in front of you of an ordinance that was unanimously passed by the Board of Alderman, that said it seemed to be a transfer ownership of the property commonly referred to as Danksfield or Danks Northfield to the school district. This has been an ongoing process. The county had already approved the transfer of Cleonsfield and Danks South to us, and this is kind of the, the last piece of the product, so to speak. So I would recommend that you accept ownership of the property, which being the state of us either, considering situation.
You would accept ownership of the property being made to us by resolutions in St. Genevieve
Move to accept ownership of the property being made to us by resolutions to the St. Genevieve and all residents and tenants to execute documents as appropriate.
Second.
Motion in second, I'll do it right there.
Aye.
Oppose, motion opposed. Next, we have the instructional program presentation for the calendar.
I'm, uh, Mike Skipweiler, this is Dennis Kreitler, and, uh, we have a teacher candidate who's been working with us, uh, from Lindenwood University, Brent Roth. Uh, we're the elementary physical education teachers covering kindergarten through fifth grade. I'm at St. Genevieve, and Coach Kreitler's at, at Bloomsdale. We'd like to thank you, the Board and the administration, for giving us the opportunity to be here tonight to give you an idea of what we do. We meet with each class, kindergarten through fifth grade, two times a week for a total of eighty minutes. Some of our classes meet on Monday and Wednesday, some meet, uh, Tuesday, Thursday, some Monday, Friday. There's no rhyme or reason, uh, there's no set pattern, uh, but we do seem a total of eighty minutes. If the weather's good, we, uh, take our classes outside, I go to the track, uh, football field, and Dennis goes outside in an open area. If the weather's not so good, then we stay in our gyms, uh, like recently. As a last resort, if we can't go outside, if our gym's not available, we, uh, we're in the classroom. That doesn't happen very often. Our lessons are structured pretty much like this. We start with a warm-up, which includes a running and stretching. Uh, we do a conditioning phase, uh, a skill development phase, and then we usually end it with a activity, which is a fun lead-up game, and, uh, usually we have some kind of catchy name with it, like, um, Swedish meatballs, stuck in a buffalo mud, get rid of the garbage, super pin knockdown, it goes on and on and on. All our activities are all-inclusive, we don't do any elimination games. If there is an activity that might eliminate, it's for a real short time, and we usually have them, uh, involved with something else, uh, some kind of conditioning on the side. Our lessons are goal-oriented, uh, our main goal is to get as many students, or what we used to do is get as many students proficient in four areas by the time they leave fifth grade, but we're in a transition period now. Uh, we, we used to test twice a year the President's Physical Fitness Challenge. Right now, it's being changed to the Presidential Youth Fitness Program. Uh, we need, and we now need to get as many students in the health, fitness zone instead of proficient by the time they leave fifth grade. And we're looking at five areas now instead, instead of four. Uh, they're pretty much the same, the aerobic capacity or the mile run, uh, the abdominal, like curl-ups, sit-ups, upper body, which would be the pull-ups or push-ups, and then a flexibility where we did measure the sit-reach. Those have all changed tests, the different, there are different tests what we have to give now. Uh, we're still testing basically the same thing, it's just gonna be monitored differently. They're adding a new one, and it's a body composition. We have to figure out their body mass index in addition to their body fat percentage. So, students are now gonna be classified in three different areas instead of two. They're gonna be in the healthy, fitness zone, they're either gonna need improvement, or they're gonna be needing improvement with the health risk, as opposed to what we did before, we either proficient and we tested them. Our lessons are still gonna include what we've all done, always done, which is running, jogging, uh, abdominal work, uh, flexibility, and, uh, upper body work of some sort. You know, we, every, every class period we have, you know, we include those things. We also, uh, do some special events. We have Field Day at the end of the school year, where we have, uh, third grade through fifth grade, we take them, at St. Genevieve Elementary, we take them out to the field, and, uh, we have twelve classes out there, and, and we do a friendly competition, which is, uh, every student gets to participate. We do, we do a thing like where we have the parachute, we have the whole class around it, we load it up with beanbags and, and balls, and they have to shake it, and we time it to see how long they takes to get it off. So, the whole class is, is working together. Uh, we also have, uh, some individual competitions, Field Day, where they jump rope, and, you know, once you mess up, you sit down, we see who goes the longest, and we do the hula hoop competition, which is, uh, pretty interesting, because we had some students who can go forever, you know, we, we shut them off about an hour and a half. We'll move on with the, the activities, and we let them put on a show in the middle of the, the track or the middle of the, in the middle of the field, and, and, uh, we, we have fun with that. And we also, uh, are, we, we work with the, uh, American Arts Association, we do the Jump Rope for Art. Uh, we're getting ready to do that, we've been delayed because of the weather, uh, February is hard month, and, and we missed the week that we were going to do it, so we backed things up a little bit, but, but we're getting started on that, uh, real soon. And that's, uh, pretty much an overview of what we do in, uh, our physical education classes.
I'd just like to say that at Bloomsdale, we have started the Jump Rope for Art this week, and it's gonna continue until April first, so.
Yeah, we're gonna do it throughout the month of March.
Thank you.
So, you get them ready to go hunting or whatever. Next, we'll move on to the business, the amended budget, Dr. Lundy.
Uh, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on the amended budget, because it's not much different than, uh, uh, the original budget that you adopted back in August. And I think I've, I've mentioned before that kind of my philosophy, uh, on budgeting is, uh, it's kind of a balancing act, okay, between providing the funding that you need for the programs and services that are needed by your students, uh, to be, be successful, with balancing that with fiscal responsibility to your community and your patrons. We're not in the business to make money, nor are we in the business to, uh, uh, spend money without some benefit, uh, for our kids. I feel like that, uh, you know, kind of as part of the process that I went through for the amended budget, uh, you know, several pages long, obviously, um, and I looked at every line item, every revenue, every expenditure, and, and went through, because, you know, we're pretty the information now that we didn't have, uh, in August. It was kind of interesting, uh, in going through that process, there were significant changes that were made throughout the budget, uh, but the end results was a budget that was, uh, less than seven thousand dollars different, uh, different than the original budget that was, uh, that was proposed. It does maintain, uh, a fund one and two balance, uh, as compared to fund one and two expenditures of sixteen point zero eight percent. I'd like to see that number grow over time, uh, into the twenty, twenty-five percent range, uh, as a capital long-term goal. I do believe that this budget, uh, puts us in a good position to meet, uh, both current and future state compliance requirements. Uh, I think that, uh, you know, we're, we're, uh, in a good, good position in all of those areas. I also feel comfortable that, uh, that this presents kind of a worst-case scenario, uh, concept for the budget. I do have contingency money built into the budget, uh, in the event that we have, uh, some sort of major issue that cuts out the requires, uh, significant, we've been. Uh, so I'm very comfortable, uh, with the budget that I, the amended budget that I've been designing. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but I would recommend, uh, approves the amended budget.
Excuse me, is anyone have a question?
Move to approve the amended budget for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school years presented.
Change the motion in second, I'll do it right there.
Aye.
Oppose, motion opposed. Next, the CSIP, Dr. Lundy.
Yes, um, and for those people who do not know, CSIP stands for Comprehensive School Improvement Plan. Um, every district has to have one, um, and luckily, Dr. Lindsay had done all the hard work last year, and a lot of jars to supply, so I got to inherit a pretty solid document. But Desi had put out a new handbook, new guidelines, um, if you were a school district that was in school improvement, you were required to follow their new format. We are not, so we got to choose, I got to choose what I wanted to do. I liked components of the new format, but I also didn't like a lot of the changes, because it actually created two separate documents. And that for us is not a good fit. So, what I did do is I spent a lot of time talking to the building principals, um, technology director, librarians, just to a variety of people that our CSIP has always, you know, kinda keyed in on their apartments, just to make sure that we created, uh, a CSIP that is streamlined and a true reflection of what we do here at St. Genevieve. So, I did incorporate some of the new formatting in what you see in practice. Um, on page one, um, we started out at the top with a district or a building, building plan designation, because our plan is in August, when we come back for the fifteen, sixteen school year, the building principals will be able to take this document, check it as a school plan, and, um, then actually go through the CSIP and work on those things that pertain to their building. They'll be able to take out those components that they're not focusing on that school year, but this, this will be their school improvement plan to, to pull it directly off of this document. It also listed upfront who your team was, so all of our team numbers are there. You see that we have parents, students, board members, a lot of our team employees, uh, community representatives, we just have a lot of different people involved in these discussions. It puts your miss- mission statement, and then it takes all of the data that you look at for your CSIP and puts it up front. So, the first section you s- see here on page one is our performance data, academic, subgroups, um, graduation rates, all kinds of different things. If you go to page four, it begins looking at what they call external factors, uh, highly qualified teachers, um, faculty with advanced degrees, professional development, and just a whole bunch of other things that we key in and look at in, you know, to, internally to make sure that we're on track. But they consider them to be external factors. Um, on page eight is where we begin with our goals. Desi recommended that you look at four specific goal areas, and we had, I think, six in the old document, six or seven. And, uh, the four that they recommended was leadership, collaborative culture, curriculum instruction, and then it split off, and then fourth goal for effective instruction. And looking at what we do here at St. Genevieve, I structured those goals a little bit different. Leadership made it sound like that we were talking about administrators, and that's not what leadership is about. Leadership is about what's hap- our building leaders, which are our administrators, but it's also our classroom leaders, our teachers. So, leadership is all about the adults here, what, what we're doing. So, we created building, classroom, leadership, um, on page eight, you see. On page ten, um, we have collaborative culture, which is all about our professional learning communities, projects, and our collaboration, and really how we do things here at St. Genevieve. Um, goal three starts on page twelve, and for us, for us, curriculum, instruction, and assessment all go hand in hand. They're all tied together. So, we felt like this goal should all be one big unit, and this is the largest component of the CSIP plan. This is the classroom instruction, it's our curriculum process, and it's ours assessment. And then when you get to page eighteen is our fourth goal, which is technology. A few years ago, they took our technology plan and rolled it into our CSIP, um, and since we are such a technology-rich school district, this is where it needs to be. And then for the fifth goal, which is on page twenty-two, um, that encompasses safety facilities and community involvement. I, I feel like we really streamlined, because we had some of the same goals just in different places all over the document, um, and we took that out to put them in one section so we could focus on it. Um, one of my goals for next year, when we begin to work on this, is creating what they call smart goals, where they're more specific, they have a measurement, they're a table, they have a timeframe, and, uh, you look at results to measure. So, that is actually from the new guidance document, but that is a very large step that we were not ready to take initially. So, I'm very pleased with the product, and, uh, I really appreciate everyone's help, especially the building principals, because some of them spent a lot of time with me, because they had a lot of questions, so, I'm glad it's good.
Move to approve the revision to the CSIP plan as presented.
The motion in second, I'll do it right there.
Aye.
Oppose, motion opposed. Next, please curriculum revisions.
Um, what you have in front of you is the K twelve music curriculum. Um, we have finally aligned it with the Missouri license and the new national music standards. So, that was the last piece that we were waiting on, for those national music standards to come out, and, uh, they were out. And the music teachers that part of their Christmas break definitely has alignment, so we're ready to, to approve, so it is ready to go.
Move to approve the curriculum revisions, the music test results. Second.
Change the motion in second, I'll do it right there.
Aye.
Oppose, motion opposed. Before we go to close session, um, Mr. Taylor, next week is Teachers' Night for the middle school. So, Tuesday, I was right. Um, so if anybody's hungry for McDonald's, most of all, we'll be giving, uh, some of the groceries for that, so if you want to grab, it's important, it's right, everybody. Okay. Mr. McVend.
I move that the Board of Education hold a closed meeting with a closed record and closed vote following the regular open meeting on March seventeen, two thousand fifteen, to be held in the R.W. Thomas Library, seven fifteen North Franklin Street, St. Genevieve, Missouri, for the purpose of dispensing and loading upon the following items to business: legal action, causes of legal infraction or litigation, lease, purchase, sale of real estate, hiring, firing, disbanding, or promoting particular employees, proceedings involving the mental or physical health of an identifiable individual, scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals, testing and examination materials, welfare cases of identifiable individuals, preparation for negotiation with employee groups, software codes for electronic data processing and documentation thereof, specification for competitive bidding until approved or published, sealed bids and related documents until the bids are open, sealed proposals and related documents till all proposals are rejected, or any documents related to negotiate a contract until the contract is executed, individual identifiable personnel records, performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, records protected from disclosure by law, scientific and technological innovation to which the owner has a proprietary interest, records related to municipal outlines established for reporting abuse and wrongdoing, confidential or privileged communication with an auditor, operational guidelines, policies, and specific response plans for preventing or responding to a critical incident, existing or proposed security system with structural planning of distant property, portion of a record that identifies a security system or access code, records identifying will allow unauthorized access to or unlawful disruption of the configuration of components or operation of a computer, computer system, computer network, or telecommunications network, credit card numbers, personal identification numbers, digital certificates, physical virtual keys, access codes or operation codes that are used to protect electronic transactions. I provide the move that notices and speeding is intended to agenda being posted required by law.
Change the motion in second, local, air closer? Yes. Elbova?
Yes.
Charlie Carter?
Yes.
John Duddy?
Yes.
Kevin Ganim?
Yes.
Bud Wiesinger?
Yes.
Andrew Law?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven oh.
We need to go to close session with a closed record, we will close the actual. Change the motion in second, I'll do it right there.
Aye.